Good evening and welcome to the Candidates Forum presented and produced by the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County. My name is Carrie Moon Dupree, President of the Northwest Wayne County League and moderator for this event. Tonight, we welcome the candidates running for Westland City Council. Eleven candidates are running for four full-term nonpartisan seats. Nine of these same candidates are vying for two partial-term seats. In the August 5th primary, the top eight vote-getters for the full-term seats will move on to the November 4th general election. The three who received the most votes in November will win four-year terms, and the candidate placing fourth in November will win a two-year term. The top four vote-getters for the partial-term seats in the primary will advance to the November 4th general election, where voters will elect the top two to fill seats. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. We do not support or oppose any candidate running for office. The League does take positions on issues after study, so you may see our name attached to an issue that we are advocating or opposing. The League of Women Voters is where hands-on work to safeguard democracy leads to civic improvement. Membership is open to anyone who's at least, excuse me, sixteen years old, and you can join through our websites. The League's main mission is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation in government. One of the ways we do that is by having forums such as this one tonight. The League also provides a nonpartisan voter guide, which can be found online at www.vot411.org. Only League personnel and the candidates are present at this forum. We solicited questions from the public in advance so that we could ask them at tonight's forum. Questions were screened for clarity, and those which included personal attacks on a candidate were eliminated. The views expressed in this forum are of those of the candidates and not of the League of Women Voters. All qualified candidates were invited, and seven are here tonight. Nope, six are here tonight, yes. All the candidates have agreed to the format for tonight's forum, which is as follows. Each candidate will be allowed a one-minute opening statement, a one-minute response to all questions, and a one-minute closing statement. The order that candidates speak was determined by a random selection process witnessed by the candidates before the recording of this forum began. We will rotate the order of the candidate who responds first. League member Sandra May Nemesto produced this forum tonight, and Toni Jones will be our timekeeper. She will be holding up cards so that the candidates know when their time is up. The candidate must stop when the stop sign appears. And now, we will get started with our forum. Let's begin with our opening statements. And first, Linda, would you give us your opening statement, please?
Good evening. My name is Linda Filozzani. I am a resident of Westland. I am running currently for Westland City Council. I have been in Westland for partially six months-plus years, but I'm originally from a small town in Marquette, Michigan. I'm a U-ber. I am running because I believe that an advocate is needed for city council. And since I have been a longtime advocate because of my son's current health condition, I have reached out to become a city council member in hopes to support the residents and be a longtime advocate for them. I believe in transparency with the city council. I have been an advocate for volunteering. I've been a longtime volunteer with Moose International, Canton Cert Team, and now I'm going to become a Westland Cert Team member, which is Community Emergency Response Team. I look forward to serving the people.
Thank you, Linda. Emily, your opening statement?
Hi, I'm Emily Baumann, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum. Again, I'm a wife of twenty-eight and a half years, mother to three, business owner, and a director in a nonprofit, local nonprofit. In November 2023, I took office right away after being elected to finish a term and then to serve a full two-year term. Right out of the gate, I set to work to learn to be a better council member. I had trainings at Michigan Municipal League, SEMCOG, and even with the directors of the City Hall to be sure that I understood everything I could about finance, city finances, which is not the same as corporate finance, budgets, ordinances, and I also threw myself onto several committees so that I could become, to strengthen my value, to being a strong council member for Westland. I'm running again because I know that we're not finished yet with some of the things that we got started these last couple of years. So I know there are areas that we can do better, and I know that with my experience and previous leadership, I'm still the right person for the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Delano? Your opening statement?
Yes. Thank you, Westland. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for having me here. I'm Delano Hornbuckle, and I'm truly proud to have served as Westland's council member for the last past three years. As we look ahead, it's clear that yesterday's solutions won't solve today's problems. That's why I believe in leadership that put residents first, not personal agendas. You, the people of Westland, are ultimately the boss, and I will always put your needs first. I envision a city of progress and opportunities where families and business can truly thrive. Together, we can attract new residents, support our small business, and build a future we all can be proud of. I'm asking for one of your four votes in this upcoming election. I'm Delano Hornbuckle. Let's build a better Westland together. Thank you.
Thank you. John, your opening statement?
Yes, thank you. So first, I wanted to thank the League of Women Voters for putting together this candidate forum to provide the residents of Westland with a chance to learn more about the candidates that are running for city council this year. My name's John Sullivan. I've been a licensed and practicing attorney for thirty years. I currently own my own law practice. I'm a former Wayne County Commissioner, having been elected for terms to serve on the legislative body of the county. I currently volunteer and serve on numerous boards for the city of Westland, including the Youth Assistance Advisory Board, the Local Development Finance Authority Board, and the Tax Board of Review. I'm also a youth mentor and a member of the Westland Historical Society. I'm asking the residents to elect me to city council so that I can provide fair, honest, and sincere representation to the city and to help move our city forward in a positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Michael, your opening statement?
Well, good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and the candidates who took the time to participate. My name is Michael Londo. I'm a lifelong resident of Westland, a former mayor and a past city council member and president pro temp. Again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters. I remember when I first ran for public office, we participated these in person, but I'm thankful for the opportunity. I'm proud of the work we've done in Westland to strengthen Westland, investing in our roads, our parks, supporting our police, fire, and EMS, and ensuring financial stability for our city. But there's a lot more important work ahead. I'm running to continue building a city that's safe, vibrant, and supportive, especially for seniors, working families, and lifelong residents. You deserve steady, experienced leadership, and I'd be honored to earn your support. I look forward to answering your questions and hearing the other candidates share their vision for our great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Joshua?
You're muted.
Yes.
There you go.
Oh, sorry. Yes, my name is Josh Powell. Thank you as well for putting this on. I appreciate it. I think we all do. I'm running to serve the residents of Westland because I think our city is in dire need of revitalization. Before I became a candidate for Westland City Council, I built an IT business, worked in IT for sixteen years. I later sold that business and went to work for a Fortune 500 company. And I've been here for over, homeowner here for over seven years now. And I recently had a son who graduated from John Glenn High School. My background is I went to Lindenwood University where I got my degree in IT. I was a military police officer in the Army before that, and then in 2020, I went back to school and got my criminal justice degree from Purdue and went back to law school to help people in the community. I'm running because I want to see my son and future generations have more opportunities than I do and want to stay in Westland. Right now, there's not a lot of people, or not a lot of kids that want to stay in Westland, but I want to change that, and that's one of the main reasons I'm running.
Thank you. We'll now be moving on to the question portion. Emily, you are up first. Economic development is important for the city. Please tell us your ideas to attract business to Westland and to retain those businesses that are already here.
One of the ideas that I'm actually working on, well, I have talked about with the Economic Development Director and some others, and is the idea that we need to provide the ability for businesses to know how to be good businesses. A lot of times, people go into business and they forget to do some of the right things, and then they go along, and then they realize that something changes that they can't fix, and they don't know how to revive themselves. And so there's some business resources I think we can provide our existing businesses to help them be stronger and to be more sustaining. In addition, we have the ability to invite new businesses because we've got a lot of open areas, whether we've got old buildings they can come into, we've got such an opportunity. And I know on my own, I'm reaching out to people of my contacts from my previous experience. I've worked with a lot of business owners and real estate people that have contacts. So being able to just branch out and doing that same networking we do with our own businesses with others to say, "Come to Westland. You can do this. Let's have some conversation." There's so many areas, even with the DDA and other areas that we can actually improve. Thanks.
Same question, Delano?
Yes, so thank you for the question. That's definitely a great question, and definitely something that's on everyone's top of mind is building the businesses' footprints in our city. It's the backbone of our city, and it's very important to bring jobs and homes to our city, and that's the first thing. So, main thing is working with resources outside of Westland, dealing with, up at Lansing, creating networks to bring in and attract these new businesses. We have plenty of spaces, but we're not bringing in the correct businesses that our residents need. So working with these bigger companies, trying to draw them in by either incentives or finding correct areas that work best for them and working with other businesses to get other ideas in our city here is paramount that we continue to integrate with our chambers and keep that foundation growing as well.
Thank you. John, same question?
Yeah, thank you. So yeah, obviously, attracting businesses to the city of Westland is huge on, I think, everybody's minds here. We have a lot of empty storefronts and buildings throughout the city, and I think the city, you know, needs to work a little stronger in trying to fill those storefronts and those buildings. I think that we can do that by helping sell businesses on the amount of people we have in this area is great for business, whether it's a restaurant or a business that needs jobs. You know, we're a large community. We're surrounded by other large communities in Canton and Livonia and Dearborn. So there's a lot of people in this area to actually patronize businesses or to work at these businesses. So we need to help these businesses from outside this area to see that. I also want the city to be able to work with businesses to help fix up some of these buildings so that they can actually get in, move into them, and start running their businesses. So I think partnering would help.
Thank you. Michael, same question?
Thank you. When I was in office, we took a really proactive approach to economic development. We boosted funding and added staff to make sure that the department had what it needed to get things done, and it showed. I worked on clearing out long vacant, blighted buildings and focused on bringing new life to our commercial areas. We also had some really productive talks with the owners of the Westland Shopping Center and multiple developers that were interested in revitalizing that property. As far as economic development, I believe in balanced growth that reflects what residents actually want and need, not just what looks good on paper. With my background in government and private sector sales, I know, I really know how to build partnerships that deliver real results. If I'm elected again, I'll keep pushing for smart development that brings jobs, supports small businesses, and strengthens our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Josh, same question?
Yes, bringing businesses and development back to Westland is definitely one of my top priorities. I think a public-private partnership would be really great. Having talked with some business owners and being a former business owner myself, I know that in my discussions within the property taxes have always come up as a reason why they don't, why they develop in other areas around us, but not necessarily in Westland. So I think we need to have, in the short term, some property tax abatement strategies in order to lessen that load. And then in the long term, lowering the property tax billages completely would do a lot to stimulate long-term growth. I think with the Westland Shopping Center, a public-private partnership could also get us a community center in one of those large vacant areas they have, and it would do a lot to drive growth in our shop-and-dine district as well.
Thank you. Linda, same question?
Thank you. I understand that Westland's business needs to be more regulated, and by that, what I mean is bringing more to Westland than current things that have been being placed, gas stations, car washes, those things. The community has spoke out. They're really tired of hearing about another car wash coming. They want to see something new, something that makes and showcases Westland as a unique place, a highlighted area to go to. Also, still focusing on the history of Westland. Reviving, I know someone has spoken of them all, but reviving them all, making it a showcase place to go to and showing, you know, Westland that it's something to be proud to be a resident of Westland again. I think that's something that's been missing from our current and previous administration and city council is making, you know, residents excited to be here in Westland and wanting to stay in Westland, showcasing and highlighting its uniqueness.
Thank you. We're now moving on to our second question, and it fits well with the first. The vacant Westland Mall has been an issue for the city for a number of years and a number of administrations. Please indicate your understanding of what is happening or not happening to revitalize the mall, and do you have any new suggestions on what could be done with that property? And we start with Delano.
That's a good question. That's been on everyone's top of mind, one hundred percent. Every resident asks, "What are we going to do with the mall?" Unfortunately, we don't own the mall. So to, what I expect or what I would like to see is a better partnership with the people that own the mall to actually get them to move some, to move and make some progress, either sell it or redevelop it. It'll be, that's a big piece of land that we can do something that would make people excited to be here in Westland. So my idea will be to keep encouraging the current mayor to keep communicating with them, keep letting them know that we're serious, that we need something to happen there, not only to make the city look better, but right now, the way it looks, it's not even safe for our residents to be there at all. So keep encouraging and keep trying to partner with the current. I believe there's new owners, maybe new management, that we can kind of incentivize them to move forward and make something better there.
Thank you. John, same question?
Yeah, thank you. So as Delano indicated, while the mall is not owned by the city, the city is named after the mall. And, you know, it's always been a big part of the city, but its current owners have been a corporation out of New York that really hasn't put much effort into fixing up or maintaining the mall. I think the city needs to get a little more aggressive with them. There's been negotiations with past administrations, current administration, and trying to get them to sell the property or develop the property. I think it's time for the city to get a little more aggressive and maybe take legal action if need be because it's become such an eyesore for the city. And I'd like to see that mall redeveloped into a downtown area for the residents. I think we can create a lot of shops, stores, restaurants, and a nice downtown for the residents in that area where the mall currently sits. And I would like to see the city start pushing a little harder to do something like that.
Thank you. Michael, same question?
Thank you. So Ann Arbor is transforming part of Briarwood Mall into apartments, retail, green space, and more. They're creating a walkable neighborhood design for today's needs, much of what John was just speaking of. Sterling Heights is also redeveloping Lakeside Mall into a $1 billion mixed-use city center. They're blending housing, shops, parks, and public spaces through a private-public partnership. Westland has taken meaningful steps towards similar goals. We had a 2022 Economic Development Strategy with supports walkable commercial spaces and housing diversity. We created the Annex at Nankin, excuse me, which is now named Nankin Square, which is a $12 million park and community hub. However, as stated, Westland Mall is owned by Namdar Realty Group, a company known for minimal investment and poor community partnership. While serving as mayor, I proposed the city purchase the mall to regain local control and guide redevelopment in the community's best interests. The vision's clear. The groundwork is laid, and now it's about leadership, community input, and action to reimagine Westland Mall as a thriving mixed-use town center.
Thank you. Josh, same question?
Yes, thank you for this question. And it's no secret that the Westland Mall is not what it used to be, and people's shopping habits have changed. It's affected malls all over the country. But plenty of malls have thrived in this environment, and I believe our mall has a unique history as the city is actually named after it, so it's worth preserving. I've actually have been in touch with the, via email, with the leadership of the owners of the mall, and their main complaint is the property taxes. They're required to pay about $1.7 million a year in property taxes. A similar-sized building in other communities around us is about $700,000. So I think offering them a public-private partnership where we could have some tax abatement for that enormous property tax bill might go a long way in helping, hoping to give them the tools they need to revitalize and work with us to create something like a community center in some of that empty area, something that residents really want.
Thank you. Linda, same question?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate everyone's responses, and I really do know that this is a focus of the community and of current and past administration and city council. What needs to happen first is actually to fix the current issues with the mall before it's even considered of what the mall can be. I have talked personally to employees. There's a dance school that's in the mall that has told us that there's been leaks, there's mold, there's electric issues. There have been local social media people that have placed posts on Facebook showing that the mall is not even well-lit for the safety concern of people shopping or people even working to serve our residents, being afraid to even walk out to their cars. I think those issues need to be addressed first. I think the concerns of safety and hazards from the building falling apart needs to be addressed first before we revise it.
Thank you. And Emily, same question?
Thank you. I'm going to take a slightly different approach to this just because in listening to a lot of people and paying attention to what they're saying, it is private property. We do have to recognize that. A lot of us talk about supporting property rights, you know, private property rights. So one of the positions I've been taking to try and encourage our administration to look at is what can we do around it? What do we have access to do? We have access to the land around the mall. We could build up trees and different things, and we could focus on the areas all around it and making it a beautiful space. One thing I learned in leadership is that what you focus on grows. So if you focus on something negative, it's going to grow. If you focus on what is positive about your community and what you can do to make the rest of your community vibrant, then it grows. And we could create an opportunity where, whether it's the same owner or another owner sits there and wants to play ball with us because they see what we've done around them and, you know, they want to work with us. So that's really my take, is to really focus on what our other strengths are and be cautious not to focus too much on that area.
Thank you. We'll now be moving on to the third question, and John, you will start this. A city council seat is traditionally nonpartisan. Some residents think that partisanship has crept into our local races. Do you believe that is a true statement, and what would you do to address this issue?
You know, it's a tough question to answer. I haven't really seen partisanship, you know, really be anything major on the city council. It is a nonpartisan position. Everyone runs nonpartisan. Even though a lot of the candidates, you know, we are either Democrats or Republicans, what I see from city council members when they're serving on council, they're not bringing party politics or trying to really push party issues there. So I don't think it's that big of an issue. And, you know, I think, you know, I see, you know, Emily that's sitting on council, and she's got her views, and Mike had his views when he was there, Delano has his views. I think everyone's been able to work together without really getting partisanship involved. And I've been actually happy to see that that's not been an issue with the council.
Thank you. Michael, same question?
Muted or no?
Michael?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, sorry about that. Can you repeat? I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? I know it's about partisan politics, but can you just repeat?
A city council seat is traditionally nonpartisan. Some residents think that partisanship has crept into our local races. Do you believe that is a true statement, and what would you do to address this issue if it's true?
So like John said, you know, local government should be about service, not sides. City councils are closest to the people, its residents, you know. They expect us to work on roads, getting your trash picked up, supporting our first responders, improving our parks, making sure your tax dollars are spent fiscally responsible, not playing political games. So while there are individuals that may have their own values or party affiliations, my focus has always been on finding common ground, building consensus, excuse me, and doing what's right for the community. I've worked well with people across the spectrum because I believe results matter more than rhetoric. We owe it to our residents to lead with civility, transparency, and a commitment to progress, not partisanship.
Thank you, Michael. Josh, same question?
Yeah, no, I really, I'd have to agree with the other gentleman. I don't think it's really been an issue that I've seen. I've been around the city politics for a few years now, but I've seen lots of disagreements, but never along party lines, just about, you know, the right way forward. But no, I don't think there's really that much overlap between partisan politics and city politics. They're kind of two different, it almost seems like two different things. But I guess no, short answer is I see people that came from all backgrounds supporting each other in this race and in other races, and I think that's a great thing to have at the local level.
Thank you. Linda, same question?
Thank you. I have heard the concerns of people feeling that the partisan, nonpartisan position has had a little bit of play on what their actual alignment is politically. I know that sometimes that the confusion comes with endorsements from candidates that are getting, and I think that's where residents get a little bit confused because they see the endorsements, and then they're hyper-focused on what that political alignment is. I do believe that the current city council works tremendously well or tries to work tremendously well with each other, and I haven't seen a play on politics with that. But I think the concern comes from the actual residents not understanding that the true city council position is a nonpartisan role. I just want to be a part of the community and serve the community, and I think that's what council is about.
Thank you. Emily, same question?
What I loved about, what I love about council is that, and city government, is that most of the issues are nonpartisan. So that's going to be the key thing. The issues we're talking about, ordinances, finances, those are nonpartisan, and that's what makes actually a kind of a really interesting role compared to other potential elected offices. At the same time, it does seem to be that voters do seem to want to vote for their parties. So while I will agree, and I do agree with all the, you know, sentiment that on the council, being able to work with people that in their core, they might be aligning with somebody. That's their individual, that's really their individual personality and their strength, and I think having those multiple ideas and philosophies coming together as one body is what strengthens our council for our city, to make it a stronger city and be able to look at things in that slightly different way. So I think, you know, while I don't, I can say it does not show up in a regular basis because those aren't the issues. I think there's some strength with having all that individualness that we bring to it.
Thank you. And Delano, same question?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to everyone that...
Yeah, I I just want to say thank you to everyone that that mentioned that the city council uh does not look to be that way or or work that way. We we stay nonpartisan. So that that's um a a great testament to the current um councils stand that way because it's important that we work for the people. And it doesn't matter uh who they are, what they believe in. If they have a good idea that's going to help the city of Westland, I want to hear it. I want to be a part of it. Um I'm always open to hear both sides and uh it's it's a shame that people feel that um the council should be one way or another where it it should not um not at this city level. We should not have no interest in there. Um so for me, I will continue to to demonstrate that. Um being able to listen to both sides, being able to agree and disagree with with um other council members because what's best for the city um should be displayed at all times. Um so, thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to the fourth question, and Michael, you will begin this. How would you encourage young families to live, work, and attend schools in Westland?
Oh, there we go. All right, can you hear me again? Okay, perfect. So sorry, can you repeat the? I'm so sorry.
How would you encourage young families to live, work, and attend schools in Westland?
Great question. So I believe you obviously got to have a safe community first before families are going to come and live in your city. You got to have a clean city, uh vibrant city, things for kids to do. Um we're one of the only cities, I'm sure we're going to get to it, so I won't talk too much about it. That don't have a a pot of a modern recreation facility. There's not a lot for kids to do. I have a niece and nephew. My nephew goes to John Glenn High School. There's nothing for him to do. Um you know, all his kids are getting into, all his friends are getting in trouble, and unfortunately, he's went down the wrong path a few two, a few times as well. So we got to have things for young families to do here. Um unfortunately, in a lot of cases, the families drive north to Livonia or they drive um you know, to other areas of Metro Detroit to to do things. But um keeping it a safe community and a clean community from blight, uh we'll keep the home values up and keep uh yeah, be able to keep families here and then attract young families in as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ja- Josh, same question.
Uh yes, uh this is one of the main things, one of the main reasons of running. But uh I'm going to go back uh to the previous, to the previous questions. Um I think the partnering with the mall to make it, to build the community center, I think would go a long way. I think it's the cheapest, most economical way to do that, and it's something that residents really want and kids really need. Um also, I um I uh would also be an advocate of an adopt a senior program, which has been successful in communities around us. Uh where you can partner seniors um or people in high school. It doesn't necessarily have to be seniors with with uh seniors at the senior center um who want to participate, and then they have a good mentorship program that way. Um I've seen that be successful in some communities. Um and then also, I think attracting new families, new young families, uh lowering the uh the property tax uh millages, I think would go a long way that as well. Uh you could get a much more expensive home and pay less property taxes in some other communities around us, which is preventing a lot of people from wanting to move here, even though the, you know, the property prices might be in their their budget, uh the property taxes aren't. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda, same question.
Thank you. Um I believe um having raised a son here in the community, I I I do think and know that there isn't a lot for younger generations to do here. Unfortunately, um that also is the same for people of my age or younger trying to build a home or trying to have a living here. There's not a lot of good paying jobs to make it a stable life. Um I think if we could focus on a lot of the empty buildings that we have here that sit empty and don't have businesses running out of them, maybe if we could focus on the current businesses that are going and trying to, you know, as myself, shop locally, um eat locally, um and just be a part of the community. I think driving the people to the community is the big thing, but cleaning the community up and bringing new businesses so people can work and live in their community would be a big start.
Thank you, Linda. Emily, same question.
Thank you. Uh I I think what's important is that we look at different, you know, the different ages of the families and things like that. And I think there's a short term and a long term kind of look at this. Some of the short term is that we do have a lot of, a lot of activities for smaller kids. We've got our um Mission to Mars Park and our our Spray Park. And there are a lot of walking areas in Westland that I think I I get surprised when I hear people not go to some of these places. There there's a lot of areas to walk. There's a lot of parks to go to. We've got pickleball all over the city now. Uh so there really is a lot of things we need to do, but I think we need to be encouraging people to go there. We need to maybe raise up these things, whether it be a marketing campaign or just encouragement and different things to go there. Because what I'm seeing is some of these things, I think they're being used by adults, but we need to make sure that we have them available for other kids. We do need to look at it a little bit at different ages and things like that. And we do have some local sports activities. I just, I think sometimes it's just that people don't know about these things, and I think that's important that we, as a city, can help provide that. And then we do need to look at the long term, getting density in our housing. We need to get some more housing in so that these small, newer families can come.
Thank you. Uh Delano, same question.
Yes, uh I'm gonna agree with, and we do have a a lot of good places, our Mission to Mars, a lot of good parks. That's always full. Uh but I want to uh say, I think as council, we can work on a better partnership with the schools. Um being able to highlight um the students' achievements bea- better. You know, uh have kids be proud to go to the Westland schools. Uh I think that also encourage uh kids to come to Westland as they see their community is embracing um young people and their achievements. Uh another thing that'd be great is, you know, more programming, yes. Uh more uh better parks, cleaner parks, uh but more programs that tailor to young families um that they can do, you know, you know, we do do a lot for the kids. But what about the thirty and forty-year-old mother that wants to get out and have a a nice time? You know, where can they go and 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 um enjoy themselves after taking the kids to the park or something?
Thank you. John, same question.
Oh yeah, I I agree with a lot with uh what's been said here. Um I think we can encourage young families to want to move to or live in Westland. Um one is by pointing out the great parks and services that we currently have. Uh I think a lot of people aren't aware of everything that the city does currently offer. Um but I I would also like to see the city invest more um and expand its parks and recreation programs. Um I, you know, I don't think we have enough staffing to, you know, adequately run everything that uh can and should be done in the city. Um but we do have beautiful parks and we do have lots of opportunities for families. Um you know, like we said, from the splash pad to um the 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 big kids park over there. And we've got playgrounds and and equipment all around the city and lots of parks for the, for the individuals to be able to use. And and the new park is actually more geared towards adults. And uh so the city is thinking ahead and trying to expand and provide places uh for all ages. And I think we need to keep expanding on that and and just letting the families know that those those things are there for them.
Thank you. We'll now be moving on to the fifth, fifth question, and Josh, uh you will begin. In the last decade, Westland has become increasingly diverse. How would you make sure that all citizens of all communities are engaged in Westland community?
Well, well, I know, I know we actually do have a a D E I department um in the city. Um I think that's, that's their main goal is to engage the the different uh communities and the different um aspects of the of the community. Um I I mean, first, we just have to be available and and listen. Uh you know, I don't, I only have my own perspective. So uh I I think going around to different parts of the city and and having, you know, town hall, informal town halls to be able to listen to what people from Norway want to know or see, or what people from uh, you know, Ford and Wayne want to see, you know, those are, our city is very large and encompasses a large geographic area. So you have to go around the city, go to where people are and listen to them um to figure out what they actually want instead of telling them what they want or trying to provide them something they may not want.
Thank you. Linda, the same question.
Um, thank you. Um having lived in a a small town that was not as diverse, that did not have the the culture and availability to um expand my horizons, I I can truly say that I'm thankful to how open Westland has been. I have met with the D E I um director and I do see all the things that the Westland administration hosts to show um how, you know, they tried to involve everybody's perspective. Um that being said, do I think there's more that can be done there? Of course, there's always more. There's always room to improve and move forward. And I think the first uh step would be to listen to what the current community and residents want to see. What do they want to know more about or feel um that isn't being talked about more? And I think that's, that's the first step that we need to take, and maybe the communication needs to be a little bit more transparent with administration, council, everybody involved in the local government, so the residents are truly being heard.
Thank you. Emily, same question.
I think this actually relates a little bit to the previous question as well, just, you know, because you you've got that that's, it's just all the different aspects, all the different categories. And it's really, it's going to be, I look at it a couple, one, obviously making sure people know what's, what, what things we have to offer, what they could do. Listening and making sure that we're not trying to make everybody into one group and do one thing, but we have a variety of things that they can do. And I want to, I kind of wanted to bring something on that I forgot to bring on the other one was even entrepreneurship. Encouraging people to be entre- entrepreneurs, I think covers a wide range of ages and diversity and all of that. And it helps with the economics. So I think that there's an element that our community can do better at that. And that way, people, you know, because that just makes, when you talk about to me again, a a community vibrant, having more businesses and encouraging people to be entrepreneurs so they can actually um support their families, regardless of what it is. I think, you know, that allows them to have, feel stronger about having a voice. It gets them more engaged with their community. And I will touch on the arts and culture as well. We do need to have a more vibrant arts and culture because that will also really help with all of those aspects.
Thank you. Delano, same question.
Yes, thank you. Um I think Westland being diverse is one of its greatest strengths. Uh we we may not really see it just yet, but I think it is one of his best strengths. And as city councilman, um over the past three years, the, that's been my main thing, was bridge, bridge that gap. And one way of doing that is going to meet people where they are, uh going to their house, asking them, how can I help you? How can I make a difference in your life? And listening to their issues and having events and show and inviting them out to events to meet and mingle and trade ideas. Uh I think this is, this is a a great opportunity to to actually expand uh Westland diversity and mingling. And like, we got the great parks, the new parks, all those things are going to be great to bring people together. Uh to, you know, like I said, it's one of our greatest strengths, and I don't want to lose that strength and and expand upon it. Uh thank you.
Thank you. John, same question.
Uh yeah, well, I think, you know, I love the diversity of Westland. I think it's one of the things that makes great, uh Westland a great place to live. And it's what helps make us all stronger. I I I think, uh you know, the city needs to continue to work hard to make sure that everyone feels in- included and safe uh when they're in Westland. And I think overall, that's, that's the picture that uh comes forward for people. Um unfortunately, there's some people out there that, you know, they don't want to be open and they're not so inclusive. Um but that's going to occur anywhere. Um but I think uh the city um is very diverse. We've been very welcoming. Um and that uh um just based upon what we do see here, I I think it 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 shows that uh the city's uh been a diverse community and and open and welcoming to all people. Um and I agree that I think we need to, we need to listen to the the people about what they need. And the city can put on programs to help people feel more in- inclusive, um that they're heard and that uh, you know, wh- whatever your background is or whatever you feel, uh you know, your life is about, that you feel included here.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you. And I apologize for the last few questions with my connection. Um diversity, um it's one, it's one of Westland's greatest strengths. And I've always believed in creating a city where everyone feels welcome. Um I was proud to be in office when we established the first Diversity Equity and Inclusion Board, and we hired a dedicated diversity director. I believe that was twenty twenty-two. Um that was an important step, but there's a lot more to do. Um if I'm elected again, I'll continue supporting inclusive programs, cultural events. I'm proud to see that the the city is going forward with the the first multicultural festival coming up this September. And something myself and the diversity director talked about while I was in office. But not only that, we need representation, representation across all boards and city leadership. Um I'm always going to stake and stay engaged, accessible, and committed to making sure every Westland feels respected and a part of Westland's future.
Thank you. We're now going to be moving on to the sixth question, and Linda, you will begin. How do you see working with all levels of government, federal, state, and county for the betterment of the city of Westland?
Um, that is a great question. I, and I do believe that the the first step of understanding, how do you see working with that? Is understanding that all government level starts po- close to local. And local is what drives it all the way up to state and federal. Um I believe that understanding that we are part of that government, but also knowing that we serve the residents. And they're, they are what makes the the whole flow of to, from the people to the people through lo- lo- local residency all the way up to state and federal. And just knowing that, that is where it begins, is I think that's the first step, is knowing how those, those feed into each other.
Thank you. Emily, same question.
Um that's actually one of the, one of my hearts, um is that that connection between those different um areas. And what I, one of the things I did as soon as I got onto council was to find out what committees, now that I'm an elected office leader, where can, where where can I serve in those areas to be better at that? So I jumped onto M M L's um Legislative Council or some council, Legislative Council. And I'm also working on the Economic um and Development Council with um M M L so that I can keep that pulse on what the state is doing and what the federal is doing in order to then support local control. We are constantly looking at things that would hinder that or get in the way of that. And so we are take, we take positions on that and really communicate with our legislators now to make sure they know, no, you cannot take away local control. Local, let's, as Linda said, all government is local, and we need to make sure that we keep, we keep that. Because again, that's also going to be what helps us be able to best serve our diverse community. If we're not, if we lose that to an upper, um even a regional government, we don't, can't, we can't meet the needs of our people the same way.
Thank you. Uh Delano, same question.
Yes, um so I've, I believe being a city council member, it's important that we do work and be engaged with all levels of of government. Um I think it's our duty and essential that we network and um network with these people in other branches. We establish uh good communication and understand what they're doing because that does affect uh us locally. Uh if there's grant money, you want your council member to be the first one aligned to try to grab those uh those funds to help better our community. If there's something that's going to affect uh our community in a negative way, as a councilperson, you want to be the first one to lie to try to combat what could be coming down the line that might hurt your uh community. So I think, think it's very essential that we stay uh in lockstep with every branch of government. Um because our residents count on us to actually do those things and bring services and goods back to a community because that's what we supposed to do.
Thank you. John, same question.
Uh yeah, thank you. Um so yeah, this, I mean, city can't work in a dome. Uh there's, there's uh multiple levels of government. And the city needs to be working with all levels. Uh we have elected representations at all levels. We, you know, we have uh um, you know, congresspeople, senators, state reps, county commissioners. And I think the city council members need to uh maintain relationships with those people. So that you you know what's going on at their levels of government, and they know what the needs are at the local level. Um so when, when there's something that's needed uh at the city, you can call on your representatives at those uh, the state and federal levels or county levels and and make sure that they're going to be behind what the community needs. Um and uh they're there to represent the community as well. So um that's why it's important to maintain those relationships and speak with them regularly and make sure that you're working together because the city can't fund everything on its own. There's a lot more money available uh from the faith, the state and federal and county governments to help us uh achieve the goals that we need to for the city.
Thank you. Michael, same question.
Yes, so uh working with county, state, and federal partner, partners is is absolutely critical to making real progress at the local level. Um during my time as mayor and as a city council member, I made sure to build strong relationships across government and successfully partner with leaders to bring in outside funding, as John mentioned, uh to support some key initiatives, including laying a foundation for a new fire station, neighborhood reinvestment programs, and community development projects. Um also, kind of what Emily was speaking to, I made it a point to attend. Um, also kind of what Emily was speaking to, I made it a point to attend state and regional conferences, uh, not just for networking, but to stay on top of best practices and bring fresh ideas back to Westland. Um, collaboration takes effort, consistency and trust, and I've proven I can do that. Uh, if elected again, I'll keep advocating for Westland at every level and ensure we don't miss out on resources or opportunities that can benefit our residents.
Thank you. Josh, same question.
Uh, yeah, um, no, it's definitely about uh partnerships with this, a state, local or between local, county, state and federal level, um, and knowing the role of each of those things, you know, if you uh, you know, if we have an issue with the county road project, it doesn't really do a lot of good to complain to the state. For instance, even though it might affect us in the city and you have to know where to go to, to talk, to discuss those things. Um um, I, there's a quote um from a former speaker of the House named Tip O'Neill, that all politics is local. So I think, um, you know, we're the first line of of contact for, for residents. Um, we can pass, uh, you know, those those things they may not know where to go with up, up to the relevant offices and the relevant places that that they might need to get them help, even if we can't help them ourselves. So, um, I think that the local government level is the most important level. It's the most closest to the people and it's the most responsive to the people. And it's our job to uh interface with the rest of the, of the government at, at the higher levels, um, or at least help the residents to point them in the direction they need to go.
Okay, thank you. We'll now be moving on to our last question of the evening before closing statements. And we will start with Emily. How would you consider climate change and other environmental issues in economic development?
That's, that's a really interesting question. Um I think one of the, the, what I, I think about for myself when I think about that is identifying areas where you can, you know, we've got old buildings and we're gonna have to revive some of them and maybe some of them we have to take down because, you know, for different reasons. But when we're building new, we can be working with developers and um organizations that actually help us have a, a better functioning building, a building that has, you know, does, has, has better energy, whether, whether it be the equipment, so we, you know, and as a city, I don't know if that's something that we will, how, how we participate with that, if we're giving incentives and things like that. But I think in general, we can encourage that in our, in our approval process with our um our planning departments and things like that, to kind of say, and again, push it back on them. When you're developing, what are you doing? What are they doing to actually make their buildings more energy efficient? And supporting our um environment and our city, whatever that, whatever that might be. Um, and we need more trees, we just need more trees.
Thank you. Delano, same question.
Yeah, uh, yeah, this definitely is a, a good tough question here. Um, so, uh I believe it's our responsibility to look after the environment itself, that, that's a human responsibility to make sure we take care of our land. Uh, I think it's important that we uh encourage uh renewable energy initiatives in our community as well. Uh, we look at um, reducing uh carbon emissions and energy cost saving um items as well. Uh, when we look at businesses, when developing new business, we, we should also look at making sure that their climate uh responsible and um and can help reduce the carbon emission as well. Um, like I said, this is, this is a good tough question, you know, you got a lot of thought behind that one. Um, but i- i- I think it is important that as humans, we take care of our environment.
Thank you. John, same question.
And I will agree with uh the first two commenters, very tough question here. Um, but yeah, uh but it's, it is, it is something that's very serious. Um, you know, we, we all want economic development. We want to uh, build new housing, we want to uh develop and, and bring in new businesses. Um, but I think it's very important at the same time that the city needs to work with these developers and make sure that they are being uh responsible and that they're not causing any environmental issues. Um, and there's a number of laws on the books that obviously they have to uh uh, you know, make sure that they're meeting and that's part of the city's job is to be checking on that and to make sure that they're not causing issues. Um, obviously, when there's new developments, there's always uh drainage issues, so that you need to make sure they either have the retention pond or that they're properly taking care of those issues. And uh, that's, you know, one of the big roles of the, the city is to make sure that that's being done, that the laws are being followed and um I would definitely make sure that uh the city is continuing to make sure that developers uh, developers are uh following uh the requirements.
Thank you. Michael, same question.
I'm just gonna say, Councilman Mike McDermott submitted this question. Um, economic, economic development and environmental responsibility uh must go hand in hand. As mayor, I supported projects where we prioritize sustainability like remediating Westland's largest park, Central City Park, which included a pond that had been fenced off for nearly twenty years. Um, if you drive by there now, it's looking beautiful. They're starting to uh plant in the trees and the grass and starting to look great and residents are starting to utilize that area. We also cleaned up, as I talked about earlier, long vacant sites to make way for redevelopment. Moving forward, I'm gonna continue to support growth that encourages green infrastructure, energy efficiency and responsible land use. Uh, we can create jobs, we can strengthen the local economy while still protecting the environment because a healthy, vibrant community depends on both.
Thank you. Josh, same question.
Uh, yeah, um, well, along the, I think along the same lines of that question, uh, I'm, one of, one of my strong uh policy proposals is um, is creating water storage for the city. Um, and I believe that that could go a long way in helping to uh reduce our overall water usage, because if we can store on water, um, um you know, use it when it's less, when less people are using it at, um, at, in the evening, um, it lowers the burden for the Great Lakes Water Authority. Um, I also, I think, um, um, encouraging uh more local solar, I actually have a solar powered home uh myself and battery storage. Um, so I think encouraging residents, uh, whether that's with uh property, I guess, um, um tax incentives or, or some other incentives uh to partner with uh, local residents to help generate their own power for their own needs, um, and make the grid more reliable and at the same time.
Thank you. Linda, same question.
Um, I have to ask the thing, agree with everybody that's said it so far. This is a very interesting question. Um, I do think that one of the biggest thing that you could do is invest in climate uh resilient infrastructure. But on along those lines too, is also paying attention to our biggest um resource, which is the community, the residents, and I think um, one of the first steps that I am taking before I'm even city council member is investing in community by being part of the s- community or emergency response team, which is CERT. CERT is invested in the community and responding to situations that, you know, involved in that. Thank you.
Okay, we'll now be moving on to closing statements and Delano, we're starting with you. Would you please give us your closing statement?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'm proud of the work we done on city council, but I know there's more. From economic development to public safety, to creating a city for young people to stay and invest. I'm committed to building a smarter, stronger Westland. I believe in transparent leadership, accessibility, accessible government and a community where every voice matters. That's why I'm not just asking for your vote, I'm asking for your partnership. If elected, I will continue to be a council member who listens, lead with integrity and always put residents first. I'm Delano Hornbuckle. Thank you for your time, your trust and your consideration. Let's build a better Westland together. Thank you.
Thank you. John, your closing statement?
Yeah, uh, first, thank you again to the League of Women Voters for providing Westland residents with this opportunity to learn more about the candidates running for city council. Um, the residents have many people to choose from in this election with various levels of education and experience. Uh, I believe that my education of having a doctorate in law, along with thirty years of legal experience, I experienced owning and running my own business, uh, my experience as an elected legislator at the county level, uh, along with my vast life experiences as a husband, father and grandfather, uh, will all help me to be able to best serve the citizens of Westland on the city's legislative body. Um, I would like to bring positive change to the city and make sure that all residents are treated with fairness, honesty and dignity. I ask the voters to consider casting one of your votes for John Sullivan so that I can help bring that positive change to the city.
Thank you, John. Michael, your closing statement?
Thank you. Thank you again so much to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and for your continued commitment to informed, respectful civic engagement. I also want to thank everyone that takes the time to learn more about the candidates, especially those who care deeply about the future of Westland. Again, I'm Michael Londo, a lifelong resident, former mayor and past city council president pro temp. I've fled through challenges, I've made tough decisions, but I've never lost sight of what matters. Keeping our neighborhood safe, investing in public safety and delivering strong city services. I also believe it's time we give Westland the modern recreation center our families and seniors have long asked for, and I'm committed to making that happen. With experience in both the public and private sectors, I'm running to continue the work we started, improving quality of life, supporting residents and building a stronger tomorrow. Westland is my home and I'd be honored to earn your vote. Thank you again.
Thank you, Michael. Josh, your closing statement?
Uh, yes, as I said before, I want to see my son and future generations in Westland have even more opportunities than I do. Not less, as I'm sure everyone else does as well. Um, I'm afraid that won't happen with the current trajectory we're on. Right now, I feel like the city in a lot of ways is just managing decline, but I think we can do better for ourselves and we must do better for our children. Uh, the city needs fresh faces with new ideas and the city government to shake things up, and I believe I'm the right person for the job. So I'm asking for your vote for both the partial term and the full term so we can get started right away. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Linda, your closing statement?
Okay, I want to say thank you again to everyone that's been uh participating in this forum, um, for really uh women voters too, for having us, but for everybody watching, wanting to know why they want to vote one of us in. Um, I believe I would be a strong candidate. I have been an advocate for my son. I want to be an advocate for the community and residents of Westland. I have seventeen years of corporate, I have a degree in criminal justice. I'm all about serving with my volunteering for Moose International and CERT team. Um, I just want to look forward to working with everybody else that has the want and need to serve the community and not just entitle. And I, I believe that this is, this is something with so many people running for, before positions that are open. I just want to say thank you for anyone that's considering me to be one of those person lucky enough to be serving the community.
Thank you, Linda. Emily, your closing statement?
Thank you and thank you again for the league for having this and for everybody participating, watching. Um, next year is the sixtieth anniversary of the incorporation of our, of our city Westland. And I'm actually excited about all that we're gonna be able to celebrate at that time. In order to be a thriving city, we need to be sure the right areas are being addressed. And we've talked a lot about those areas today. Leadership and experience matter, and I bring with me over twenty years in a combination of corporate and business ownership as well as two years on council now. Um, I see Westland both as a visitor and as a resident because I used to visit this city every summer when I was a little girl, so I see it in a different way than some. And so I have that ability to just kind of focus on that. So while, so as I said, leadership and experience matter, and I think earning another term on council means that I can help I can help in the ways and focus on the right priorities for our residents and businesses to flourish. So please, um, I am asking for your vote again for Emily Bowman. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. We thank the League of Women Voter Members who helped with this forum. The forum has been recorded and soon can be viewed at the league's website, L W V of Northwest Wayne County. We also have a YouTube channel. Um, I will be sending the link to Sandy and I am asking her to forward it on to each of you so that you have a copy of the forum. Uh, it may not be edited in any way. Please note that the ownership of the recording resides with the League of Northwest Wayne County. The candidates or their supporters may not use portions of the forum or any audio clips, video clips or trans transcripts for political advertising or other purposes without the written permission of the League of Women Voters. We also thank the candidates who are running for office. They are asking for your support as they seek a job in the public service sector and we hope voters will listen to their views. We also appreciate the voters in the city of Westland who are watching this forum to learn about their choices for city council. All city council candidates have been invited to participate in the League of Women Voters Online Voter Guide, a publication that you can access by visiting vote four one one dot org. The, the League of Women Voters is providing this forum as an opportunity for candidates to express their views related to their candidacy. Statements expressed by the candidates are not endorsed or opposed by the league. Also, the league does not certify any candidate responses to the questions as accurate. Voters are encouraged to fact check information shared at the forum. If you are not registered to vote, you can do so through Election Day. Within fourteen days of the election, registration must be done at the city clerk's office. The polls are open from seven A M to eight P M on Election Day, but all registered voters can vote early by absentee ballot or at the early voting site. If you are voting by absentee ballot and have not already requested to be on the permanent absent ballot list, you will need to fill out an application first. An absentee ballot application for the upcoming election can be requested by visiting the Michigan Online Absent Voter Ballot Application, contacting your city clerk's office or downloading a Michigan Absent Voter Ballot Application or picking up an application in person at the city clerk's office. Voters in Michigan can also vote during early voting. Westland has chosen to do early voting. At early voting locations, voters will have the opportunity to vote and insert their own ballot into the tabulator. For the August twenty twenty-five primary, early voting is available to registered Westland voters. Early voting will be open at Westland City Hall, three, six, three, zero, zero Warren Road from eight A M to five P M, July thirty-first through August second, the Thursday through the Saturday prior to the election. This concludes our forum this year. Thank you to the candidates for participating. Wait, let me stop it again.